I would like to call the meeting to order if you would please stand. Pastor Matt Wilson from Antioch will lead us in our invocation. There you go.
Could you join me in a word of prayer tonight? Father, we come before you and thank you for our city council members and officials, Lord, and I just pray with them. God, I know sometimes we have a long, tough day, and we need your strength, and I just pray over them today, Lord. I pray for those that will be speaking tonight, and give everyone tonight wisdom and discernment, Lord. And we do, first and foremost, we thank you for our community, God, and just what a great town this is, and thank you for an opportunity to serve our citizens and to serve this great community. And so, God, just be with this meeting tonight, Lord, and pray that it would just be a special time, and again, we thank you for what you're doing here in Odessa, and we love you, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Now, this time, Councilmember Gardner will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the text.
All honor and protection required by the Constitution of Texas. One mistake under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated.
We gotta be proud of you.
There are no proclamations or awards, so we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I make the motion that we move item six, both the hotel motel tax, your fund recipients to the next item.
Okay. We have a second, thirty-four discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. This time, I'm going to just go down the list.
Oh, I'll follow you.
No, I was gonna actually let each one of these talk about why they want the money.
Oh.
So, I'm just gonna go down the list as it's presented to us, so if the Black Cultural Council could come up. And we'll give everyone three minutes to talk about this, just in the interest of time.
You were asleep back there.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen. My name is Joanne Davenport-Little. I reside at 1005 Pine Avenue. I am the president of the Black Cultural Council of Odessa. I think you have our request before you, and I think the mayor said, comment on why we want the money. Our organization, we're requesting funds because with these funds, we host three events: our Martin Luther King Celebration, our Black History Program, and our Angel of Geneteen Celebration. Without these funds, we probably won't be able to have a Geneteen Celebration, which is the largest organized organization in the world. It's nothing new, it's a proven fact that it's the largest. This year, according to the police, there was over 10,000 people in attendance, and that was due to our website. People from all over the world come, and we appreciate everything that y'all have done in the past, and we hope you'll continue to give us funding. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next organization is Bless West Texas. Is there anyone from Bless West Texas? Okay. The next is a BLST Triathlon. Is there anyone here from there, this organization? Okay.
My name is Mike Greer, and what our proposal is, is to put on a mud obstacle race, and we've been counting 2016 after this event. This year will be four years that we put it on, and so, we want to repeat that in next year in 2017. There any questions?
Where's it held?
It's held at the Mountain Bike Park. And we import the mud. And people actually pay to get the mud. Any questions?
Any questions?
Some people may not know where the Mountain Bike Park is. Could you please tell them?
It's on Billy Hex, right off of Billy Hex Road. And it actually, where it is, is a pit. I don't know what used to be done there.
Clean to be, I'm sure.
I think the city gave permission for the bike club to use that a few years ago. Is that correct?
Sorry, I'll ask a question.
The council gave permission for the bike club to use that pit a few years ago, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next will be the CAF. Is anyone here from the CAF? Okay. Next is Convention and Visitor Bureau.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mike George, 30 Club San Jose, President and CEO of Odessa Chamber, and this is Lwana Lambert. She's our Convention and District Bureau Director. And we also have Renee Earls, who is the new President and CEO of Odessa Chamber as of last week. First, Lwana's gonna talk to you about the Convention District Bureau budget, just briefly, and I would like to address the sports recruitment account. It was brought to my attention that perhaps some of you councilmembers were not aware how that thing works. Back in 2009-10 fiscal year, the city came to us and said that they would like for us to try to recruit more sporting events onto the fields out at UTPB Park and all the city parks, and asked if we thought incentive money would be helpful. We said absolutely. So, y'all, we have a contract to recruit people for all kinds of sporting events, bringing out-town people to town. And the way it works is y'all have, in the past six or seven years, earmarked $100,000 of your reserve money for this recruitment money. You do not send us a check for $100,000. You keep the money, and then after an event occurs, we do the economic impact, and we'll determine how much money, incentive money, we're gonna give them to bring the event back to Odessa. So, I just wanted to explain that we don't really get the $100,000. You keep it, and then we use it, and we send you a letter, and then you send us a check, and then we deposit it, and turn it right around, and write a check to the people that put on the event. So, that's the way that works. But Lwana here, I'd like to talk to you about the Convention District Bureau.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, Mayor, councilmembers. First of all, thank you for your service, and what you do for our community is greatly appreciated. As the new director of the CVB, we are very excited about going forward and bringing more conventions to town, bringing more travelers, more tourists, more sporting groups. We have a very strong team, very synergistic team, and we're very well together, and we are very excited to see numbers rise. Currently, hotel room rates have dropped a little bit, and it is helping. People are coming to us, and we are able to achieve responses from others that we have lost in the past due to room rates, so we are seeing a rise, and we are very excited to see what the next year has to bring. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
You're just welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being there.
Mike, thank you for all of, I know you probably won't be coming back to address this again, but thank you very much.
That's just a lucky guess.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gloria Hernandez. I am the Director for Downtown Odessa, and happy to be here this evening to take the opportunity to ask you for requests in our funding. We're looking at an additional $89,358 in order to expand our current event programming into two-day festivals for downtown. Currently, everything that we put on is a one-day evening event, about six hours. So, with additional funding, last year, we were able to add an additional night for hot summer nights this year, as well as a children's activities area, which has been very popular. And so, for next year, we would like to grow firecracker funding, go into a two-day event in order to also capture hotel motel stays through the weekend for the community. We are having our inaugural Tap Into Downtown Odessa Craft Beer Wine Festival this October 1st, is what it's slated for. We would like to be able to expand that into a weekend craft beer wine festival. We've heard from breweries and wineries that they would like to be able to stay for the weekend, and if we do that, we also increase the hotel and hotel stays there as well. In addition, we're asking for an increase for our Live After Five event. This would be a monthly event that we would start about this fall, and it would be an evening event to be able to have food trucks, live music, and expand that throughout all year in downtown. So, we know events are a critical component in making downtown a destination site for locals as well as visitors in the area, and we know it's a critical component in revitalizing the area and bringing people into downtown as an attraction, and we'd love to just kickstart a lot of event programming, so when we receive our new hotel convention center in the area, we can easily plug in a lot of these events into the plaza space in the surrounding area. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is FWT Odessa Productions. Is there anyone here?
Hi, my name is Richard Esparza. I'm the Director of FWT, Fisto West Texas, born and raised here in Odessa. I've lived here all my life, and first of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor, and the City Councilmembers. Without your funding, the last five years, an event like ours or any events here could not happen, and I am so honored to be able to provide this event. Fisto West Texas has gone over 22 years now. We've had it, this year, we added four days. It happens at the Acton County Coliseum. It happens always the first weekend of May, simultaneously, so that's a good thing and a bad thing, because you never know what the weather's gonna be like, but you just grin there. We've grown the event to over 30,000 within the four days. This year, we added an indoor car show. We've got it, we've kept our team roping and vendors, easily, right there is just 300 out-of-town people that come to the event, just to participate. That's not including all the visitors that are coming and buying tickets to come to the concerts. We have one of the biggest stages provided in the area, outdoor concerts. We bring in some of the biggest stars from Toronto, to country, to Mexican regional artists. Revenue I feel in the city, just for the attendance that are coming that day, is way over a million dollars, just from people at hotels, people at gas stations, people at buying food. I guess that's all. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next, we have the Junior Jacks, and I'll let you go and do the Jackalope's while you're up.
Actually, I think Danny's gonna do the Jackalope's.
We'll separate.
Okay, my name's Donnie Burgady. I'm the President of Youth Hockey here. I took it over back in 2008, and I retired from playing for the Jacks. I took it over in 2008. We have just under 25 kids, and now we have just under 200 kids playing the game of hockey here in the Permian Basin. We have a house league program that runs through the week. It starts on Mondays, and it goes Thursday nights. And then we have a travel program, which is our biggest program now. Last year, we had varsity and a junior varsity team from all the high school students that play here in the area. We play against New Mexico, El Paso, Amarillo, Albuquerque, Los Alamos, Taos, and also a team from Colorado, Durango. So, they have home and away series. So, all those teams have a JV team and a varsity team, so they'll come down here during the year. Our year runs from September to March. And then our other teams, 6U, 8U, 10U, and 12U, we had two jamborees last year, so we brought in 24 teams last year from Austin, Fort Worth, Dallas, all the surrounding areas, and on each team, usually about 10 kids playing each team. So, we funded over at least 400 hotel rooms last year during our eight-month span, and so the reason why we have this money is because we're five hours away from the nearest ice rink, so over the years, we've gone to Dallas, Fort Worth, El Paso, Amarillo, so we want to bring teams here to Odessa, so their families can watch. All the entry fees down there are $1,600, and we only charged $200 last year, just to get teams here, and so, we had 24 teams show up last year. It was great, and they just love the hospitality here of Odessa people. So, we're gonna do it again this year twice, and that's pretty much it. I mean, there's a huge expense for referees, and the building costs, and the jerseys, and the trophies, and so that's where we use the money.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the Odessa Council for the Arts, and you made these.
I was here with Jackalope, sorry.
Come on, we'll get this one.
Good evening. My name's Dana Laverne. I'm a former player, former owner, and a current board member of the Odessa Jackalope's. This is kind of a milestone year for us. This will be our 20th season to provide affordable family entertainment here in the Permian Basin, so we're very excited about that. It's, you know, we're approximately gonna have 30 games, as we do every year, so we're one of the largest, you know, forms of affordable family entertainment here in the basin. Last year, even with the down economy, last year, we were able to increase our attendance by 62%. We did a lot of promotions at our games, bringing in Ninja Turtles, and Permian Band, and WWE wrestlers, things that we didn't do in the past, that helped increase our attendance. I think we brought in, obviously, I think we had 700 hotel rooms that we used, we're involved in housing the other teams when they come in, as well as all our players' parents, and families, and league personnel, and stuff like that, so I think we estimated around 700 hotel rooms we had last year, and should be in that same vicinity this year as well. The reason why we're here, obviously, hockey's an expensive sport. I think, you know, I've been here since day one, since 1997, and that's the last time we actually turned a profit for the Odessa Jackalope's. So, for the past 18 years, basically, the owners have been making up shortfalls, so obviously, you know, Hotel Motel helps us getting closer to breaking even for the year, and we rely heavily on those funds. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Next is Odessa Council for the Arts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Randy Ham. I am the Executive Director for the Odessa Council for the Arts and Humanities. For nearly 40 years, the Odessa Council for Arts and Humanities has been the driving force behind arts and culture in Odessa. Our member organizations have brought world-class artists and entertainers that would rival any season subscription in any major metropolitan area. Whether it was working with ECISD in the Junior League to bring children's author Eric Carl to one of the very first child's plays, or inviting India Flint to travel to Odessa from Australia to teach at the Allen Noel Art Museum, this organization and its members have striven to give our community the very best, and our community has responded. For 2016, we have already awarded over $300,000 in subgrants to over 30 individuals and agencies in Odessa to assist them in performing and creating works of art for our community and our cultural tourists. Each year, we find new and exciting things to enrich Odessa. Working with Downtown Odessa Inc., Hot Summer Nights, has exploded over the last two years with our food trucks and our children's activities, just as Gloria just talked about. The attendance for Hot Summer Nights has doubled over the last two years, and the caliber of entertainment has magnified. Following the success of Books in the Basin, Odessa will host its own film festival in October, and there's so much more to come. Public art has grown by leaps and bounds. Now that our master plan has been completed, we have chosen artists to create pieces of traffic box art, starting in downtown. Our goal is to cover all 127 traffic boxes in Odessa. As we do that, our Public Art Committee is also hard at work creating a proposal for an installation using the old Cloth World sign. None of this would be possible without the assistance of you, our city leaders. We are honored and proud to know that the leaders of this city appreciate and understand the value of art in our community. We want to thank you for your continued patronage of the arts, and respectfully request that our HOT allocation remain unchanged. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Next is Junior League of Odessa.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Bowles, and I'm also a native Odessa. I'm a boomerang who came back, and I'm enjoying every minute of it. This year, I'm the Junior League of Odessa's Merry Marketplace Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council for your past support of Merry Marketplace through the Hotel Motel Tax Funding. This year, I am here on behalf of the Junior League to ask for funding for the 34th Annual Merry Marketplace, which will be held November 3rd through 6th at the Acton County Coliseum. The money raised at Merry Marketplace, which is our annual fundraiser, is returned to the community through our own projects, through our community assistance grants, and through projects of other local nonprofits that we also partner with. Through the funds raised at Merry Marketplace, the Junior League has returned to the citizens of Odessa over $6.5 million. Merry Marketplace in Odessa is one of the oldest Junior League Christmas markets in the United States, and thus, it draws over 90 merchants from across the United States. Merry Marketplace measurably puts heads in beds during the hotel industry's traditionally slow month of November. Since each of these merchants bring between one and six employees to step their booths, and they all stay between five and six nights that week, you can see that with 90 merchants, that becomes a tremendous number of room nights for hotels in Odessa, and provides quite a financial boost for our local hoteliers. Junior League of Odessa fervently hopes that by increasing our existing advertising dollars, we can reach even more people in surrounding communities, and we will bring in more overnight guests who will spend their money at hotels and restaurants here in Odessa. Through the use of these advertising dollars, we will be able to increase our revenue during this challenging economic period, and that will enable us to further contribute funding, the funding that benefits Odessa and SIR projects through 2016, 2017. Some of those projects are a new mentoring program with ECISD, the Career and Tech Students, Kids in the Kitchen, where we partnership with the West Texas Food Bank. We partner with the Crisis Center for Birthday Brigades, the New City of Odessa Spray Park at UTPB, and the City of Odessa Parks Department, Mother-Sun Dance. I appreciate your time and your very thoughtful consideration of our request for these hotel-motel funds. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Next is Odessa Links.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, councilmembers. My name is Erica Thomas. I'm the Executive Director of Odessa Links, and we are requesting funds for our Hope Fest and our Community Conference. Our Hope Fest is in its fifth year, and it's brought award-winning and nominated country acts to the Coliseum. This year's date's August 13th, so we hope to see you there. We've continued to expand our reach with the funds that we receive from hotel motel grants, so we thank you for that. Our Community Conference, we just hosted our third conference back in March, and we've actually doubled our attendance because of your support. We've actually had to move our location as a result, so that's a good problem to have. And this next year, we're hoping to bring a nationally recognized speaker who actually created the content, so we've experienced quite a bit of growth and quite a bit of following of people that enjoy that content, not just here locally, but across the regions in Texas. So, thank you for your support, and we hope you'll consider our requests.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. Do we want to call the Parks Department?
She, Chris, just jumped up.
Come on, stay there. You've got 30 seconds.
How much time do I have? 30 seconds.
30 seconds, and you're already in.
Good evening. I have three applications. Which one, I don't see the...
Fall Festival.
Fall Festival's first. Fall Festival started several years ago with 987 people. Last year, we were up to 10,000, just under 10,000 people. It's grown, it's a very popular one-day event in fall. The concept that we adopted came from, actually, several ideas that came up with many years ago, and it's grown into something that we had no idea that it would turn out this big. We have hot air balloons, we try to make sure that the theme of everything we do is free, it's family-oriented, affordable, top-quality, and something that everyone is going to enjoy. We have it next to the interstate, so it's easy, visible from I-20. People can access the roadway, see it, see the hot air balloons. Our publication is what brings all the people. We try to mass the entire Permian Basin Southeastern New Mexico with the publication advertising that we do, and then all the acts and the entertainment that we bring, we try to make sure that they're unique to our event, different than any other event in Odessa, so we really search the United States and bring in some neat acts that are tailored for children and the families, and that's what the Fall Festival is all about. We expect at least the same amount, if not a lot more, people than what we had last year. So, very excited about this year again. It really started out so small, and I thought this is gonna be a good thing for us. Oh, way out of control.
Okay, next is the golf course.
Which one's next?
Golf.
Golf course, Golf Course, Rattle Ranch. We use hotel motel funds to recruit outside of this area, visitors to our area, especially our tournaments, and we've hit the entire Permian Basin Southeastern New Mexico, as well as the Lovett Market this year, with all our advertising campaigns to make sure that we have the word out in West Texas and the Permian Basin, so that we do cover as much territory as we possibly can with our advertising and marketing campaigns for Rattle Ranch Golf Course, and that's primarily what these funds are used for.
Okay.
What's the round you have to do?
We're pushing 43,000 rounds, and we did do some math, and we found out that outside of this area, we're pushing 35 to 40% of our players are not from Odessa.
So, within the joint, Chris, that right? Yes. My hand.
Outside of Odessa Midland area, it's about 40% outside playing.
Okay. Thanks.
So, do you think that advertisement you had at the airport helps?
I think it's very important, and that's exactly what these funds are for, is the advertising at the airport.
So, these funds are not advertising?
Fewer exposure there at the airports, what these funds are for, to make sure that you do attract visitors from the area, and it takes a while to get that advertising, and we signed up, and don't want to lose that space. I think we did ask for some funds for the rental of that space there at the airport, and that's important.
It's a three-year, two-year, three-year?
I think it's a three-year lease.
Next is Star Rock.
Now, Star Rock Village is something that this lady over here, it's her fault?
Former mayor.
She said go, and nobody's told me stop, so...
Don't give her the ideas, Steve.
Star Rock Village is, no doubt, something that is, we started back in 1990, 91, actually, even before that time, we were doing the tree here at City Hall, but it's grown to a destination event for West Texas and the Permian Basin that is well over 132,000 documented visits last year, the largest event that we've ever sponsored, and we had three days of bad weather during that time, and that also does not include the people that walked. That is traffic count on vehicles only that we had. It's about a month spans that we have. We always come right after the community tree lighting ceremony, it's always on Thursdays, Saturdays, the parade. That's always what we do, and then January the 1st is when we close, but primarily, all the funds that we use is for displays, as well as advertising and marketing. It's important that we have advertised through the years, and our donations, if we would charge almost as much as if we had charged per vehicle to go through, for some sort of fee of around $5 to $10. So, we get a good amount of donations. We have a lot of community participants, a lot of sponsors that we've partnered with through the years, and with that type of attendance, it is unbelievable, the amount of people that need, that has become a tradition now for West Texas and people in this area. They'll come to the parade, and then it's go out to Star Rock Village, and they'll go through four different times, and we recorded people from Alaska, all over the United States that have been through. Our advertising campaign, I think, is first-class. We make sure that it's high-quality. We, right now, have an RFP out for naming rights to Star Rock Village, and hopefully that will be announced soon, who our partner is gonna be there for the naming, exclusive naming rights of Star Rock Village. But with 132,000 people visiting Star Rock Village and going strong, we've got some, we already have some more displays ordered for this year that's gonna be unbelievable. And when the mayor flips the switch, I can't tell you what's gonna happen, but it's gonna be fun.
More than I can. Any questions for Steve?
Have you had any vandalism issues before there?
At Star Rock Village?
Yeah. You know, there's... Yeah, and since you've started.
Well, I would say the worst incident that we ever had was the very last night that, two years ago that it was open. We didn't have security there that night, but the lights were turned out, somebody stole all our extension cords. But that's the only vandalism we've had. It looks like pride in what they have, and they see that, and it's well-attended and enjoyed, and we do have security there every night.
Did you take the cord back? Thank you, Steve. Next is Permian Basin Fair.
Good evening, Mayor DeHanson. My name is Jack Leffey, and proud to be the president of the 41st year of the Permian Basin Fair Expo, which we think is the best annual event in Odessa and the Permian Basin. We're proud again this year to give away $41,000 worth of scholarships, which in turn is, if used at the three colleges in the Permian Basin, turns into $82,000 worth of scholarship. We're continuing our concert series at the fair. Our headliner this year is Greg Morgan, and we'll have concerts all throughout the week. We have enhanced our website and digital advertising with the help from y'all from last year, which we deeply appreciate. We also had TAFNE this year, the Texas Association Fairs and Expo, which won eight first place for our website, or media, or print, and social, I can't remember all of them, but it's a great honor to win these first place. I guess that's about it. We appreciate your help. Do I have any questions?
No questions? Thank you very much. Next is Rock the Desert.
Mayor, City Council, thank y'all for allowing us to come and present this grant request to y'all, and my name is Doug Toll, and on behalf of Rock the Desert, we thank you for your past support, and a big, a quick overview of Rock the Desert, it's, as it has been for a number of years, it's the fourth or fifth largest Christian festival in the United States, and we continue to, the festival is three days, it's always the fourth, it's always the first weekend in August, and we have anywhere between 12,000 to 15,000 people that'll come through there, so each day, so that's, you're talking about 30,000, 40,000 people, whatever it is, but as far as giveaways, tickets, whatever that is, it's 12,000 to 15,000. So, we're, as you know, I know that this request is for next August, but as you know, we're very well in the heat of trying to get ready for this festival this year, so I guess the main thing that y'all would need to know, and we've really, we've had great support from the hotels here in Odessa, we actually had lunch with them a while back, and how we can work together and promote each other, and etc. And we have a survey that we do every year that, and we have to ramp it up based upon percentage of attendees, tickets sold, attendance, whatever, how many fill out the survey, but the survey says, there's a TV show that says that, I think, or something, but anyway, the survey says that we've got roughly about 75% of the people that come to the festival are from out of town, and it's, I'm on the grounds, I'm all over, but it is amazing to sit and watch, and part of the parking team as well, but it's really, it's really funny to sit and watch all these vans and buses and all that, you know, First Baptist or whatever, whoever they are, but anyway, we thank y'all's support and thank for the opportunity to come present this idea to y'all once again. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next is Sandale Stock Show and Rodeo.
Good evening. I'm Bill White with the Sandale Stock Show and Rodeo. I think this year, we are 83rd year. Last year, our show, we had 940 contestants, and nearly all of those are from somewhere way off. We had 29,570 in attendance over the six performances. We have a stock show, we showed 819 animals, were shown by 396 exhibitors from 131 different county chapters, and most of those are from ways off also. We had our Christian Youth Night, we had 1,100 that night, probably about 10% of those kids are coming from out of town. We have a special needs rodeo on the last Saturday morning, that had about 150 special needs kids, and it's a pretty neat event, and brings kids from a pretty good area. And finally, the Super Tuesday Roping, we had 210 rovers at that, and again, those come from way off. Also, our contract personnel, they're here for the entire time. We think we're one of the premier events in Odessa, and try to provide good family entertainment. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next is Texas Tours Entertainment. Is anybody here from Texas Tours? Okay, next is University of Texas of the Permian Basin.
We just want to hear from you.
Mayor and City Council, I'm so used to coming before you and asking for money for so many different purposes and occasions, I'm confused what it is that I'm asking money for. I'll be happy to give you a general overview of various needs for the behalf of the university, but I think the one that you're, are you talking about the football support?
Football.
Yeah, we've had great success, thank you, with your support during the past year. We're bringing in over 40 new athletes, new football players. Our first game will be September 3rd at Rattles Stadium. Where it'll be, our second game against West Texas A&amp;M will be broadcast on the ESPN3, yes, one of only two Division II football games of new programs that'll be broadcast nationally. So, we've produced all the necessary reports that we've agreed to, we've demonstrated to you that we're making good use of your investment, and beginning September 3rd, we're gonna begin to fill up hotel rooms in a much greater fashion associated with each one of our games going forward. Be happy to respond to any comments or questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Oh, not yet, not yet. Are you going to talk about the first five? You're asking for money out of the general fund also.
Put him on the spot.
If I've already hinted, Ms. Raff? I'm prepared to ask for money for just about anything, but I do have a representative from first five who's prepared to address that issue.
Good.
Just make him sweat.
I could not resist that, I'm sorry.
It's all right, just keep writing the checks.
Dr. Watts, I just wanted to say, I'm very excited about the football team that's coming in, I've already bought my season tickets.
Thank you, Phil. And I'd like to take a roll call, Mr. Mayor, of each of those who bought theirs. Very good, very good, and the rest of you, there's an opportunity yet to be had online, WagnerNoelle.com. Call, we'll take care of it. For you, Ms. Raff, I have got the perfect ticket.
Oh, I'm afraid for his gonna be.
Thank you, and we do have another presentation, as you know, later on.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead? Sure. Okay.
Way shorter than him. Good evening, my name is Sherri Fincher, and I'm the Assistant Director of First Five Permian Basin, which is also part of the University of Texas of the Permian Basin. I was actually agenda on six, but I'm gonna go ahead and present since he called me out. In August of 2015, the Odessa City Council adopted a resolution supporting early childhood education and the work of the Early Childhood Coalition that was outlined in the Early Childhood Strategic Plan. This plan includes the work of over 30 entities, local entities, that are supporting the improvement of the lives of families with young children, leading to school readiness and future success. As part of this plan, the City of Odessa Parks Department has collaborated with First Five, along with the Rotary Club East, to install the Born Learning Trail at Sherwood Park, among other things. Tonight, First Five Permian Basin is requesting support for the continued implementation of the Early Childhood Strategic Plan, particularly in those areas where we're precluded from using dedicated state and federal funds. This request will support such activities in Odessa as providing developmental educational materials to home-based childcare providers, support for the Little Free Libraries in Odessa, which have been very successful, we've distributed over 1,000 books since November, since those were installed with help of the Junior League, support of continued provision of the Kinder College Kinder Garden Preparedness Summer Camp that we offer, along with ECISD, conducting focus groups of young families to assess their needs, challenges, and desires for their children, support for an adult literacy program in Odessa as a way to support parents and grandparents in reading to their children and their grandchildren, and support of fatherhood engagement activities, such as the Day in the Park with Dad event that we collaborated with the City Parks Department, which was just held this last Saturday on the 18th. Community education and events that promote healthy eating and physical activity, we have planned an upcoming reading rodeo that will include bike safety, and we're actually collaborating with our several local partners on that, professional development opportunities for educators and other service providers who serve families with young children. For example, this past summer, First Five and the Early Childhood Coalition offered training in the Conscious Discipline Curriculum that ECISD currently uses in their pre-K, which helps young children and families learn social and emotional skills, and we had over 200 local providers that attended this training. So, in recognition for the city's support, we will have, the City of Odessa will be recognized as sponsor of First Five and any Early Childhood Coalition events.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next is Wagner Noel. Former mayor, Harry.
Hi, Eric Hall.
Bye.
I'm delighted to be here. I'm also part of the University of Texas of the Permian Basin contingent, as you all know, the Wagner Noel is part of the university, and I chair the Wagner Noel Advisory Committee, so that's why I wear the hat tonight, speaking for you on behalf of Wagner Noel. I know it's hard to believe, but in November of this year, we will have been open five years at Wagner Noel. It's a fast five years, and a lot has been accomplished. Since November of 2011 to March of 2016, our gross ticket sales have been $19,341,115. The number of events that we have hosted at Wagner Noel are 834, and 535,998 people have attended events at Wagner Noel that have actually bought a ticket, and we have free events as well. So, I think that kind of speaks to itself about the impact that Wagner Noel has had on Odessa and Midland and the entire Permian Basin. I would like to introduce the folks that are from the Advisory Committee and from the university who are here today, Peggy Dean and Don Wood, were on the committee that raised the money to build the Wagner Noel, so we owe them a big thank you for holding the facility. Of course, the Texas system, the Texas Legislature, and Peggy, and Don, and the folks in Midland raised $22 million of local monies to complete the facility, and it's, I'm happy to say that that was literally equally balanced between the two communities. No community gave more than the other. So, it truly is a shining example of cooperation between Midland and Odessa, and what we can do together rather than separately, because we could have never afforded a $70 million state-of-the-art performing arts center either in Odessa or in Midland, but together we can accomplish great things, and we have. Other people that are on the development of the Wagner Noel Advisory Committee are Lisa Noel Wagner, who is sitting right here, you might notice the similarity in the name. Lisa lives in Midland, but she is a Noel, grew up in Odessa, literally for a while, we lived across the street from each other when we were growing up, and her family endowed a large part of the money that went to build the Wagner Noel, and she continues to be very active in our events. Kara Zaya Foy, who sits next to her, and of course, Dr. Watts and Travis Woodward from the university need no introduction, and they help us stay on task. And last but not least is Ricky Gonzalez, who is right here, who is part of the staff at the Wagner Noel, and if there's anything I can answer, he can help me out on that, okay? Other members of, Odessa members of the Advisory Committee that are not present tonight are Kirk Edwards and Dick Civils, they're at an oil show board meeting tonight and said to send you their regards.
Excuse me, Miss Man.
It's catching up.
And Don gave me his time. And I got two presentations, too, okay? So, anyway, Bubba Saul Berry and Craig Van Amberger also on our Advisory Committee. So, what we are here today to ask you for is support for our five-year anniversary celebration. In your packets, you have all kinds of information supporting what we're trying to do. The attendance on report showed you how literally people come from all over the world to attend events at the Wagner Noel. We have a large percentage of our population in both communities that attend, but from the outlined areas as well, and as far away as New Zealand, believe it or not, and many different European cities as well. So, we put a lot of heads in beds at the Wagner Noel for those 535,998 people who have attended events there. We have been recognized all over the world for the quality of the facility that we have and the kinds of shows. We're in the top 10 of the mid-year list for venues of under 2,000 seats, we're number six in the world for theaters under 2,000 seats, in Venue Today Magazine, and number 68 in Polestar. So, we have been recognized everywhere, you have all of the supporting information, and we're going to be bringing in five different shows throughout the year to highlight this celebration that we are bringing to our community, and they literally appeal to every demographic and every walk of life, you have a list of that as well. As I mentioned, we have presented two different proposals, one for $40,469 for promotions, and another one for $9,531 for a children's festival and a children's show. I will have you know that I am lightening your burden tonight, ladies and gentlemen. I talked to Randy Hamm, and the Popovich Comedy Pet Theater would come out of his 15% allocation that the city does, so he has agreed for us to apply for that money, that $10,000, through the Arts Council, and take it off the table tonight here, so that you have $10,000 more to give somewhere else, because Randy is going to support our effort in doing a free performance for kids. So, is that a great idea? So, we're working together, as even though we're in competition for the same money, we're working together to provide those services. The last thing I would like to say is this, we want this to be a joint effort of Midland and Odessa, because we wouldn't have this theater without the cooperation of our two communities. So, we have gone to the City of Midland, they have agreed to fund us, we are asking for you to fund us, so that all of the promotion that we do in the City of Odessa and Midland throughout the state of Texas and across the country will be co-branded by the Wagner Noel Performing Arts Center fifth anniversary, the City of Midland, and the City of Odessa, because we want everybody around the country, unlike what they have heard, to know that our cities work together for the betterment of our entire region, and I ask for your help in co-branding this effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions? I just asked, how many people have been to Wagner Noel that are in the room?
I think Randy's just afraid of you, that's why.
No, that's just you, David. That's just you.
Thank you very much.
You're dogs, but yeah.
Yeah, Don, you're gonna say...
I support the things she says.
He raised all the money.
Smart man, smart man.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
I really, really liked the visitors' packet that you gave us.
Yes.
Because you've got the most thorough of any I've seen. We know where the people that are coming from, out of town, and I think that's amazing.
For all of y'all, we had a map of the United States and put dots where everybody came from that has visited the Wagner Noel. came from that has visited the Wagner Noel from around the United States and around the world, to let them know that we're not just blowing smoke here. We have all these people coming, just got proof, got proof.
Thank you very much.
We use a ticketing agency, and it's all computerized, and it is tracked, and that report was generated by E-Tix, our ticketing agency. That's not just us counting hits when they come in, but actually when they pay by credit card, which is the preferred form of payment, because many of the tickets are bought online, then it tracks exactly where they live, so we have exact numbers of how many people and where they're coming from, and that's how we were able to generate that report, was through E-Tix.
Thank you.
Pretty neat.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We would appreciate your support.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad it's y'all up there and not me.
Next is West Texas Track Club.
My name is Sarah Nibo. I reside at sixty-four forty-eight Richmond Road in Odessa, Texas. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmen and Women. I want to just start by saying thank you. Thank you for all you do for West Texas kids. We've been all over the television and newspaper for the past three weeks with our little track meets. I have hosted three track meets so far, and we were able to award two thousand dollars in scholarship to two high school graduates. I do apologize for not getting my packets out to you, but my head has been spinning lately, and I will get that to you all after the statement. The hotels in Odessa are sold out. They are sold out for the track meet we're having in about a week. The state track meet is exactly a week from today, and it will be running from July 5th through July 9th, and everyone here is invited. The opening ceremony will be on Wednesday, July 6th, at 1:00 PM-ish, and I put the "ish" in there because we'll have to finish the four-by-eight-hundred relay before the opening ceremony, and then the hundred meters will be right after that. I've made several calls to the city to see if Mr. Mayor or any of the city council members will please come to the opening ceremony, where we go to other cities, the mayor or city council personnel, come to this opening ceremony to welcome the athletes and declare the meet officially open. I'm still waiting for a response. We would really appreciate if somebody would come.
As long as I don't have to run. You don't want to see that.
I will drop off some VIP badges at the city office if anyone would be interested to attend. Again, we are very humbled and grateful for your love and support. We are competing this year at home with home support, and it would not have been possible without you all. We are excited, the food trucking business, they love us, they are excited because all these athletes are coming to town. We're thinking about anywhere from four to five thousand athletes, so if you don't have to be out on the road, I would recommend you stay home. Baseball's pretty busy. Thank you all for your love and support. On behalf of West Texas children, I say thank you, and may God bless you all.
Thank you. Next is the White Pool House.
Good evening. I'm Christine Holken. I'm the chairman of the White Pool House Friends. The White Pool House Friends are respectfully requesting funding through your historical restoration and preservation program. Only three short years ago, we were faced with possibly closing the doors of the museum. It has been a lot of hard work, and thanks to you, the City of Odessa, we are very close to becoming now a self-sustaining nonprofit organization. We are becoming a success, excuse me, a success story. We are asking for your help in finishing the vacant lot project. It's the centerpiece of our large revitalization project. Please help us cross this finish line. Given our proximity to the new Downtown Convention Center, our museum and event center benefit everyone. Our marketing will include the regional magazines and internet ads. We have learned that we are reaching more people all over the United States through this marketing approach. This is where our audience is. At this time, I would like to introduce our manager, Aileen Taft.
Thank you. My name is Aileen Taft. I am the museum manager, and part of my job is handling events and tours. I've been with the museum for three years, and during this time, I've seen tremendous growth in tourism at the museum. It's been very exciting to see. We've gone from having about thirty tours a month with about eight hundred from various fundraisers a year to having approximately ten thousand tours a year, plus additionally having more than forty events booked in 2016 alone. Because of this increased traffic, we estimate that we're bringing in a minimum of six hundred hotel nights to the City of Odessa. A byproduct of our events is that we've been able to garner interest in history with people that have visited the events, people that would have never set foot on a historic site otherwise. Additionally, we have also been able to see the benefits of working together with local and regional businesses that have brought in photographers, caterers, DJs, bands, just to name a few, that continually promote Odessa, and a great team effort, so we are so close to the finish line. We thank you for your support in helping us realize our goals. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you all very much. Next is Ector County Coliseum. This is a contractual, is there anybody from the Coliseum here? Next we'll move to the general fund request, Odessa Crime Stoppers. Come on down.
Well, after Lorraine, y'all try to stay awake while I'm talking to you. I followed her a lot of times. I'm Vern Fulman, eleven West Twenty-Fifth, mayor, council, and staff, completely do the work. It's always a pleasure to come and talk to you about crime stoppers. The reason it's always a pleasure is because it's always good news, and we've had a very successful number of years, I guess we started in eighty-three. Since nineteen eighty-three, we have recovered eleven million two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars' worth of drugs or stolen goods. Now, I wonder, many crime stoppers don't solve crimes, they only give information to the law enforcement people so that they can, so Chief Burton can use his people to solve the crimes. This year, since January, we've had seven hundred and eighty-nine tips, which resulted in seventy-six arrests just this year. Some of those the public knows about, like the people that decided to steal ATM at Eligante and illegal dumping, cases where the puppy was burned, and things like that. Those are some of the things that we worked on and gotten information and passed on. And of course, high five fugitives is always a successful endeavor. Again, we know how many people came in and volunteered to pay, and we know how many people got arrested, so you never know which one formed which. But anyway, we have always participated in all the city activities as far as crime enforcement, law enforcement. We continue to do the same. We're recognized all over the state as one of the leading crime stoppers organizations, and it takes money to operate, and we've been lucky enough to have you all to help us, and I hope we will continue to do so. If you'll help us, we'll continue to work.
Okay, any questions, Forward?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Teen Core.
No, Tammy's not here tonight. I'm Rebecca Gresham at thirty-three twenty-one Fairmont Drive. Tammy apologizes, she is with her parents on vacation. Teen Core is asking for the same amount of money as last year. We are busier than ever, which is good and bad. We were up over five hundred kids last year, which was over a hundred and fifty more than the year before. We kind of had a little dip with some changes in legislature, and our numbers are way back up again, so we have a whole lot of kids going through the program. We still have a very low rate of kids coming back to us. We just have a lot of new kids. We have a whole lot of traffic tickets. Actually, Corporal Fraser that's out in the hall, he does our defensive driving class once a month for our teenagers, and this year, we've already sent fifty kids to him, so we'll hit over a hundred for this year for sure. Those are our alcohol kids and our kids that have been in accident or excessive speeding, so that's a very good class for our kids to go to, and we appreciate this time. Our kids are able to donate food to the food bank for some hours, and last year, they donated over fourteen hundred pounds of food to the food bank, and eleven thousand-plus community service hours were performed around all of our agencies. We have over sixty. And not with this fund, but our scholarship fund that we have for our teen volunteers. As of this year, we've donated fifty-nine thousand dollars of scholarships to our kids that volunteer as attorneys and bailiffs and things, so do y'all have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Permian Basin Community Centers.
Good evening. I'm Ramona Thomas. I am the CEO of Permian Basin Community Centers for Mental Health and Mental Retardation. A lot of folks know us as PBCC, our acronym, but even more folks probably know us as MHMR. We provide services to people with mental illness, substance abuse disorders, children who are in need of early childhood intervention services, and last but not least, the reason I'm here tonight is we serve folks who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. For those of y'all, most people know, but the old term was mental retardation, and that term has been revised to intellectual development of disabilities. We do provide services all over the Permian Basin, but we have more programs and more facilities in Odessa than any of our other areas or towns. And I am accompanied tonight, and I'm very proud to say so, by our vice chair, John Lynd Graff. Most of you know him quite well, and luckily, you reappointed him at your last council meeting. Barely. So thank you for that. Our request of seventy-five thousand dollars is to help fund services to approximately eighty people a year that we provide services to with intellectual and developmental disabilities, specifically our vocational workshop or our current highway. The seventy-five thousand dollars is used also as the city's share of local match that the state requires of us. You're probably familiar with, you don't get any money from the state unless the local community also puts some money into it, and this amount of seventy-five thousand dollars is exactly equal to the amount contributed by Ector County as an entity, the City of Midland, and the County of Midland, so it's shared equally. The vocational workshop is a day program, and it provides a structured environment where our staff teach personal hygiene, money management, communication skills, and job skills, that's the important thing, in a vocational workshop setting. The goal is to help our clients with intellectual development of disabilities progress toward full integration into the Odessa community and into full employment. Without these programs, this program in particular, these individuals would be sitting at home doing nothing, have nothing to do but watch TV. So it gets them out, and it earns a paycheck for them, because for many of these clients, as they learn the skills that we just talked about, they can progress to working on our highway litter and our janitorial crews for our contracts with Tech Stop. You've probably seen them around town. The most important thing is, they are then contributing members of the community, they're earning a paycheck. We also do some fun things. We go to the library, we go to the mall, so bowling, those kinds of things, but it's a good program, and I hope you will give it your full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Young Professionals.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I want to start by saying we would happily take Ms. Lorraine's ten thousand dollars if it helps. My name is Chrissy Menina, and I am with the Young Professionals of Odessa. I am a board member, also past chair, and a founding member of the Young Professionals of Odessa. I have with me Matt Wood. He is currently the chair this year. He's done a fabulous job. He's my cheerleader right now, so. So we're basically an organization that was developed by the Chamber back in 2012. We were founded by the Chamber, by Sandra Oof was one of our founders, she was chair at that time, and her vision was to create an organization that continued to sustain leadership positions throughout our city. By planning and hosting events such as our Lunch and Learns, and I believe Mayor Turner, he did our very first Lunch and Learn, we've also had Rose Langgraf come out and talk to our group, we've had Downtown Odessa come down and talk about the revitalization, that was one of our more popular ones, too. Of course, everyone loves them the airs.
Of course.
We also started an esteemed speaker series. Last year, we brought in Brian Daniel, all the way from Austin, Executive Director of Texas Economic Development and Tourism. That's quite a title, but he was lots of fun, another really, you know, heavily attended event, and we also invited outside members of the community, not just our members. A lot of our focus is strictly going to be on leadership training and our strategic planning. We have even geared our upcoming board retreat for that. Not only are we going to have training, but we're going to have insight from various members of the community, some of those being Craig Van Ambergerd, the Chamber Chair, David Butan with Frost Bank, the new Chamber CEO, Renee Earls will be with us, and of course, Toby and Sandra Oof. We continue to strongly support our community involvement by participating in several community service events throughout Odessa. Most importantly, we center leadership and service reach just beyond YPO. We have several of our board members, including myself and Matt, that are also members of other boards. I'm also on Junior League Odessa, the YMCA nonprofit management center, so, you know, YPO is a passion, but so is our community to all of our members, and especially our board members. We're in an organization, Meetup, of young professionals from different, various career paths, different backgrounds, and different walks of life. Although we are different, there is one thing that does unit by us, our passion and our commitment to developing the future leadership of Odessa. So I'd say thank you for your time, and thank you for your support of the young professionals, but most importantly, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here and speak with you today. We've all been very excited, so.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes all of the organizations, so we will start with...
You know, I've been sweating blood over this.
I was gonna let you go first.
No, I really have, because this is the first time I think this council has had to cut a very large, so, as, you know, like a million dollars off of the request, and I know what it was like when I first came on the council, it was like, oh, gosh, I've been through this, I know it's difficult, and I thought, well, if it will help, I'll volunteer to be first, because frankly, it's very painful, because every one of you do a tremendous job, and we had more money in the past where we could give you a lot more, and that made it very pleasant, and this time, it's, I don't think anybody's really going to enjoy tonight if you're up here, because frankly, we just don't have as much money, and like I say, it's kind of painful being up here, and I thought, well, if it will help up here, I'll go first.
All right, let's get started.
That way you can throw all your arrows at me, okay. The first one is our Black Cultural Council, forty thousand dollars. Blessed West Texas, zero. The Blessed Triathlon, you're new, I think it's great that you're here, want to support you, ten thousand. The CAF, we, Odessa and Midland work together on that, and they do bring in a tremendous amount of people, fifty thousand. The Convention Investors Bureau, and y'all do a good job, but nine hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. The sports events, zero. The Downtown Odessa, your whole purpose here is to build up downtown, you come up with so- You've come up with so many good ideas and things that you're wanting to do for the next year to bring more people down to get ready for our hotel and convention center. And without money, you can't do it, so five hundred thousand. Fiesta West Texas, thirty thousand. Junior Jax, being an old school teacher, I'm really proud of youth being involved. I really want you to bring more people in from out of town, eight thousand. The Junior League, you do a good job, fifteen thousand. For the Arts Council and Humanities, Randy, I want to thank you for volunteering to help Lorraine out. And because of that, I'm going to give you her money, okay? Not all of it, not all of it, just part of the nine thousand that y'all talked about. So for the cultural arts, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-one.
Mayor, Council, just so you know, they may have asked for four fifty, but you may give the Arts Council up to that fifteen percent, but it would be the eight hundred and thirty-one.
I would really, really like to, but if we did, I'd have to cut a whole lot of people out. And everybody's going to have to tighten their belt. And I'm on that group, and they may kill me at the next meeting, but I'm sorry. Odessa Jackalopes, yes, put down for them, thirty-five thousand. Lynx Conference, seven thousand. The Lynx Hope Fest, twenty-five thousand. Fall Festival, seventy-five thousand. Ratliff Golf, now, make sure I read your thing correctly. To continue the advertising out of the airport, that's going to cost you sixty-five thousand, right? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sixty-five thousand. For Starbright Village, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred. For the Fair, seventy-five thousand. Rock the Desert, twenty-five thousand. For the Rodeo, seventy-five thousand. The Tejano Car Show, thirty thousand. For UTPB, two hundred thousand. For the Wagner Noel Anniversary, forty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine.
UTPB had two hundred?
What did I say?
Yeah, it's fine. Okay.
Two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. I could have said the wrong thing. Okay.
And just a note on that, the two hundred thousand is already up there because that's contractual.
Right.
For the audience.
West Texas Track, fifty thousand. The White Pool House, just pretty vital in helping us with the Hotel and Conference Center. And by reading your report, you need at least sixty thousand to finish that.
Expansion.
Some kind of expansion out there. We gave you money last time for the gazebo. That's what it is, the gazebo. So I'd really like to see that finished, so sixty thousand for that. The Coliseum, fifty thousand. And the audit, you guys are going to have to tighten your butt, just like everybody else. Thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven. And that should be three million.
She dropped it.
She dropped it. Thirty-one. Thirty-one, seven, sixty-seven.
I need to do it again, because I have no idea.
That's it. Why don't you go ahead and do your general fund?
You want the general fund now? Okay. Crime Stoppers, fifty-five thousand. Teen Court, fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty. Permian Basin Community Centers, seventy-five thousand. YPO, ten thousand. And first five, ten thousand.
Okay. Next, we'll go to Councilmember Burden.
Okay. I like giving away for a million dollars. It may not be as much as you got there last year, but I like it. All right, let's start with Black Cultural Council, forty thousand, five hundred. Blessed West Texas, zero. BLST Triathlon, five thousand. Commemorative Air Force, forty thousand. Convention and Visitors Bureau, eight hundred thousand. CNV Bureau Sporting Events, one hundred thousand. Downtown Odessa, I'm going to come back to again. We'll skip that one for right now. FWT Odessa Productions, forty thousand. Jax Youth Hockey, ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four. Junior League of Odessa, twelve thousand, five hundred. Odessa Council for Arts, four hundred and fifty thousand. Odessa Jackalopes, fifty thousand. Odessa Lynx Conference, nine thousand. Odessa Lynx Hope Fest, twenty thousand. Parks Fall Festival, seventy-five thousand. Parks Ratliff Ranch Golf Link, zero. Parks Starbright Village, two hundred thousand. Permian Basin Fair Exposition, one hundred thousand. Rock the Desert, fifty thousand. Sand Hill Stock Show and Rodeo, seventy-five thousand. Texas Tours and Entertainment, fifty thousand. University of Texas, that's two hundred thousand. Wagner Noel, forty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. We'll skip that one, Children's Fun Festival. West Texas Track Club, fifty-five thousand. White Pool House and Friends, thirty-six thousand. Ectric County Coliseum, fifty thousand. Administrative costs and audit fees, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three.
Then you have the Downtown Odessa.
Okay, you should have got to go back. You got to go back to what's left on the...
Forty-six.
Whatever's left on the... And...
Go ahead and go down to the general fund.
General fund, fully fund all the categories as I covered.
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez.
First of all, I want to say, guys, I mean, reading through this book here, it's complicated to look at everybody and just say, well, this is more important than this one. And it doesn't come down to that. Sometimes, you know, we got to make decisions based off of what we hear in the community and what we see. And on top of that is our cut feeling. I mean, there's some of these programs on here that I feel like, you know, even though we don't have a lot of money, it's tough to cut their budget when they don't have that much as it is. And, you know, when you're paying somebody's salary off of that or helps pay somebody's salary off of that, you know, it's kind of tough. And there's some staples in the community that I feel like, you know, need to be funded, fully funded, or as much as we can, like the West Texas Track Club, the, you know, Sand Hill Stock Show Rodeo. I remember as a kid going to that, and I'd hate to cut back on that. The Forty-Fourth Annual Tejano Park, the Rock the Desert, very important to, for the community. Starbright Village, I mean, that's beautiful. I mean, I'm sure most of y'all have been there. I would hate for that to go away. Hope Fest, the Junior League of Odessa, the Merry Marketplace. Fiesta West Texas, I mean, all of these are staples, like I said. The Black Cultural Council, very, very important for our communities and making sure that, you know, they give back to where we live. And so in saying that, I wanted to let y'all know that, I mean, this was not an easy decision, you know. But I'll go ahead and get started now. Y'all don't have tomatoes or... All right, here's mine. Black Cultural Council, fifty thousand. Blessed Triathlon, ten thousand. I'm excited to see what you're going to do. Commemorative Air Force, fifty thousand. Conventions and Visitors Bureau, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Convention and Visitors Sports Events Recreation, I guess, ten thousand. Downtown Odessa, five hundred thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Fiesta West Texas, sixty thousand. Junior League of Odessa, twenty-five thousand. Odessa Council for Arts and Humanity, four hundred and fifty thousand. Odessa Jackalopes Hockey Team, thirty thousand. Odessa Lynx Community Conference, seven, I mean, seven thousand, five hundred. Odessa Lynx Hope Fest, twenty-five thousand. Parks Department Fall Festival, seventy-five thousand.
Hang on just a second. We've got thirty thousand on the Jax.
Thank you.
There you go. Now we're on it. Ratliff Ranch.
Ratliff Ranch.
Seventy-five thousand for Ratliff Ranch. Starbright Village, two hundred thousand. Permian Basin Fair and Expo, a hundred thousand. Rock the Desert, fifty thousand. Sand Hill Stock Show and Rodeo, and because of Ms. Perrin, it's eighty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five. The Forty-Fourth Annual Tejano Supercar Show, fifty thousand. Wagner Noel, forty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. West Texas Track Club, fifty-five thousand. White Pool House and Friends, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine.
Then your general fund.
Four dollars?
How soon? Fifteen.
Is that important or? Take off four dollars from hands or? Okay, and the general fund as is, as it stands.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Okay, Mr. Brown.
Let's just get started. Black Cultural Council, forty-five thousand. Convention and Visitors Bureau, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eighty. Sporting Events, sixty thousand. Downtown Odessa, four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-two. FWT, sixty. Junior Jax, ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four. Junior League, fifteen thousand. Odessa Council for the Arts, four hundred and fifty thousand. Odessa Lynx Hope Fest, fifteen thousand. Fall Festival, seventy-five. Ratliff Ranch, sixty-five. Starbright Village, one hundred and three thousand. Permian Basin Fair and Exhibition, one hundred and ten thousand. Rock the Desert, fifty thousand. Sand Hill Stock Show and Rodeo, seventy-five thousand. Texas Tours and Entertainment, forty-five thousand. UTPB, two hundred. Wagner Noel, fifth year anniversary, forty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. West Texas Track Club, fifty-five thousand. I messed up somewhere.
White Pool.
White Pool House is forty thousand. The difference of six thousand goes to the Hope Fest, wherever it was. Whatever the difference might be.
Add on to the fifteen?
I'm sorry, the Odessa Lynx Conference, the community conference.
Community conference?
Yes, ma'am. As far as the general fund, fifty-five thousand for Odessa Crime Stoppers, fifty-nine, nine, twenty, Odessa Teen Court. Permian Basin Community Centers, seventy-five. And YPO, ten thousand. Not UTPB, the YPO.
Okay. Councilmember McNeil.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I want to say thank you to the council, to the mayor, for the opportunity to serve the city of Odessa on behalf of Councilwoman Roger Timothy McNeil. This is very new to me, and I want to be very fair. I would like to piggyback off of Councilwoman Barbara on her figures tonight. The only difference is that I want to give the Black Cultural the whole fifty thousand that they're asking for. And everything else, if you will go back to her figures, I want to piggyback off of her figures. And then with the general fund, as is.
Okay. So just copy Barbara's over.
Except for she said she's...
Except for Black Cultural.
Yeah, take it from UTPB. From the base of...
Take it from Permian Basin.
From, from...
The University of Texas of the Permian Basin.
Well, that's contractual. It has to be two of them. It can, it can still be for hers, Richard. Either way, yeah. It's almost the totals that, that three million, yeah.
Why don't you take out the Convention and Visitors Bureau because that's going to be a... Come up there.
We're going to have to come up with a total anyway.
Why don't you take ten thousand from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'll round you out at three million.
Okay, as far as consensus, Black Cultural Council, we do not have consensus.
Yeah, we do.
We've got forty-five.
You got five.
Now you got five. Forty. We've got two fifties. Forty-five, forty, and forty-five hundred. Is anybody interested in going up to fifty?
Someone you want to go to fifty?
Yeah.
Michael?
Yeah, you can move, come down to the...
So you want the fifty?
Yeah, move, move it to, move it to fifty and take the difference off of the Downtown Odessa.
Okay, at this point, pray that matter taken or given, as long as you see the consensus. Touch five is three, is three million.
Go ahead. On the West, West West Texas, we've got a consensus. It's just, we need to put zeros in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to change.
There we go.
Yeah, that'd be fifty thousand.
That would be, yeah.
Okay, the triathlon, we have a consensus. CAF, we have a consensus. CVB.
Let's come back to that.
We come back to it?
Back to that.
Okay.
Okay, if we were to take, Julie, could you read these years?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, we'll come back to that. Sports event recruitments. We have two zeros, a hundred, ten, and sixty. Who's interested in moving?
If I'm close to the zeros, I'll just.
Mike, Mike, you wanna come down to sixty, and, uh, you wanna go up fifty, or?
I can cut down to the sixty.
Okay, Mike comes down to, Councilmember Gardner comes down to sixty.
So we got two zeros and a sixty.
Two sixties. Councilmember Gardner's at, uh.
Philly, you wanna go down to zero?
Or up to sixty.
I mean, that's what I said earlier, I said anything.
Oh, did you all figure the zero?
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez goes to zero. We have a consensus there. Uh, next is Downtown Odessa. Two five hundreds. There's a five hundred, three oh eight. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you wanna come down to five hundred down?
Yes.
Okay, we have a consensus there. FWT, Odessa Production, we have one, two, we have three, consensus there. Uh, the Jax, we have two thirty-fives, a zero.
Uh, Mayor, I'm sorry, uh, yes, West Texas, uh, you're missing one for a consensus there.
I'm sorry, look, it's a little bit. We got two sixties. Two thirties, so, Philly, what's your?
Um, I wanna keep mine.
Sixty, okay.
I'll come down to fifty, the other two will come up to fifty. I'll do that.
Okay, so that's Mike, and, Councilmember Bryant, and... So our two thirties, McNeil and Braff, you want to go up to fifty?
I'm gonna go up.
You'll go up to fifty, okay. Councilmember McNeil will go to fifty. Councilmember Bryant goes to fifty. And Councilmember Gardner goes to fifty, so we have a consensus. Uh, next is Jax Youth, uh, we have two eight thousands, and two ten thousands. Anybody interested in going to eight, or coming up to ten?
If you can make it ten even. Y'all take yours down to ten, I'll put them both at ten.
Thirty-four dollars, free men, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, we've got Bryant, Braff, and Gardner all going to ten thousand. Okay, next is the, uh, Jax Hockey Team, we have thirty-five. Two thirty-fives. I'm sorry.
Oh, you already got, no, you, oh, nevermind.
You can go thirty-five.
I looked along where I'm at.
Philly, will you go up just to thirty-five, then?
I'll come down, I'll come down thirty-five.
I'll go down to thirty.
Now, uh, Councilmember Gardner's going to thirty-five, so that'll make a good consensus.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the Lynx Community Conference, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez, you come down to seventy-five? I'm sorry, seven thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, Starlight Village, uh... Councilmember Bryant, where you at on that?
I am exactly where I'm at. We talked about it, and I've, uh, visited, I think, this is not the year to add anything new. And I think I heard it took out, it's fine.
Okay. Anybody interested in coming?
I'll, I'll, I'll go to one twenty-three.
Okay, Councilmember Gardner will go to one twenty-three, six hundred. Permian Basin Fair. We've got two seventy-fives, two hundreds, and a hundred and ten.
What year is this for Permian Basin Fair?
Eighty-third.
What year?
What do you want? You know, in, in the past, we tried to keep the Permian Basin Fair and the rodeo at the same level. And a couple of years ago, y'all jumped the fair up, but you haven't jumped the rodeo level.
Well, we have a consensus on the rodeo, so, um...
I'll, uh, I'll come up to a hundred.
You're already a hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll go to, no.
Nice of you.
If you get consensus, I'll drop to a hundred.
Okay, um, Bryant's been dropped to a hundred, if you get consensus there. Next is Texas Tours, um, two fifty, two thirty-five, and forty-five.
I'll take my ten I just gave up, make it fifty.
Okay, and we'll make, um, that fifty, that'll go as consensus. Uh, next is White Pool. And they're all, um, we've got two sixties.
We've got one now?
We've got two sixties.
I'll move mine to sixty.
Okay, Councilmember, uh, Gardner will move his to sixty.
Yeah, move your left over.
Yeah, I gotta go back.
Alright, now go back up. Uh, CBB, two nine-nineteens.
Look, uh, Mayor, Council, you have eight hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars left.
We what?
You, you only have eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
That doesn't include the audit, nor does it include the coliseum, right?
No, it does.
No, no, this is the only one that's outstanding without a consensus with, with the number in it. So if you go anything higher than eight eleven, you're gonna go over the three million.
You know, the only thing I'd like to say that's immaterial at this point is that we're dropping that organization that is dedicated to our city for conventions, twenty-five percent, but it is as it is.
We have two nine-nineteens. Nine seventy-six, eight hundred.
So even if I move out mine to nine nineteen, we still can't do that, 'cause we only have a hundred and.
Exactly right, exactly right. To an organization that is dedicated to our city for no other purpose than to expand our city, we're dropping twenty percent.
I'll move mine to eighty-seven, two oh eight.
Well, let me, let me offer this. If you go to the eight, if you go to the nine nineteen, six thirty-three, the five million probably afford it, it just puts more pressure on it.
Hey, it's, it's, it's immaterial. I mean, this is the, uh, decision of, of five people with forty-some type of recipients, and, uh, you know, our, our charge was to keep it under free men. They've made their choices, and we've all made our choices, so, uh, as is.
Oh, that still leaves us at two at nine nineteen, one at nine seventy-six.
Yeah, I, 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 I find it hard when we can even look at cutting some of our own things, such as, uh, the items associated with forty-three thousand rounds at Ratliff. Chris, you do a great job, and I appreciate it, and, and Steve also, but, you know, I think that, uh, local advertising is immaterial, you know? And I, I think Starlight, we can only do what we can do. I mean, Steve, how many parks you putting in? Uh, you know, there's quite a few things that you're doing with your own hat on that, uh, uh, create, uh, bounds that we're taking money from elsewhere to try to hope you get it done.
Looks like Ratliff was cut to sixty-five.
From?
One seventy-two, I think.
Well, let me ask one thing with the, uh, it's hard, we believe in the confidence that our visitors feel. You pretty much have a, a, a new young staff, right? So, therefore, your salaries are going to be considerably less this year, right? And I think in the past, you give them part of your funds for, for a vehicle for, for mine. Could we?
That's been the case for the past twenty-three years.
Could we, you know, like, eliminate that? And with the salaries, would that get you where you need to be?
Go ahead and go back up to it.
Eight hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eight, it's been cut.
Don't think anybody else there took a twenty percent cut?
Well, the Arch Council had to take a fifty.
Arch Council had specific allocations the last two years for specific projects, if I'm not correct. Associating with, with, uh, Mr. Gillum's projects that we did, we allocated additional funds for those.
So the nine seventy-six you came up with is?
Nine seventy-six is what I felt like could be lived with by the group.
Okay.
That's a five percent cut.
Councilmember Gardner, what do you think?
What do we have?
Eight eleven and unallocated. So it'd be a hundred and sixty, and Councilmember Bryant would be a hundred and sixty out of, over the three million.
Come up to that.
You'll come up to that?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Gardner's is nine seventy-six, four eighty.
How much will that put us on your?
Hundred and sixty. It's eight eleven now, so it'd be a hundred and sixty.
Do we get consensus on that?
I guess we'll get a consensus.
So who are we gonna cut now?
I don't see how we can cut. I think we're gonna have to extend the budget.
Be a hundred and sixty-five, two seventy-two.
It appears that one of the, one of the next biggest ones that we have up there is Downtown Odessa, of which has gone in the last three years from a hundred and fifteen to four hundred and ten to five hundred. Is that just gonna continue to grow, even though we do not have the convention center yet? I mean, you know, I, I think we've got an area of time here that's, some want a period that we, uh, kind of, of, uh, get ready to get to that point, and, and again, this is, you know, we're in, it, one of the things that was included in there was a light show for downtown. I just don't think about now's the time for the laser show downtown, uh, you know?
Councilmember Gonzalez, what do you think?
Going Firecracker Fandago, two days, I think we're having to change places this year, and it, uh, I think Laurie's doing a great job, do not get me wrong, but I think there's some things that we could move on down the road with that organization.
I feel that the eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars, the Conventions and Visitors Bureau would have been able to function this year. I, I'd hate to really go back and cut somebody else's throat, or their legs, or whatever. I think we've cut enough from what we, you know, from where we started, I think we did a really good job. I, I, I don't think that, that's really going to decapitate them, I guess, in my opinion. So I, I, I don't wanna go over budget, I hate going over budget, 'cause we do this one time, I mean, we, we're gonna have to do it next year, and then, and next year. So I'd rather go back to the, the difference and just leave it as it lies.
Where are we at downtown?
Downtown is.
Look and see where, look at it, let's see where we're at.
It's five hundred, it's consensus.
And that cut our budget with that?
Well, no, those are three new events, they didn't cut a budget, those three new events are added down, Tap In, fifty thousand, Live Up to Five, twenty-nine thousand, and Firecracker Fandago, from one day to two days, was a hundred and ten. So that's, uh, that's eighty-nine thousand in new events, as it is.
But those, one of those events is.
Your opinion, and that's my opinion.
Well, one of those events is an event every single month to bring people downtown. So it's more than just three events, it'll be about fifteen events.
Richard, what's the, uh, what was the income for last year?
We're estimating this year's income at four point one, but you've got obligations.
Yeah, you've got obligations.
Okay. If you wanna go to three one sixty-five, you'll be okay, but again, you're pushing.
That's not good. Well, we split the difference between the two of them.
How about if, if, uh, Philly, and if Amy and I make ours, whatever you said we had, eight hundred and eleven, would that do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'll, I'll move mine like that, then.
If both of y'all want to.
And that would get us at three mil?
Yes, ma'am.
Told y'all this was painful.
So you're gonna take a hundred and what, you're gonna take a hundred and what thousand off of that convention bureau?
Uh, which is, it's some of that eight eleven, what?
It was eight eleven.
Eight eleven, two oh eight, Mike.
Did I change my?
No, Bryant.
Please, Matt, please.
Sorry, sorry, just trying to get consensus, who else?
Braff. Braff.
Thank you.
One of me, I don't say more.
Okay, scroll down, just look at the, uh, general fund down at the bottom. We've got a consensus on all those.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, gonna need a motion to approve the, uh, the hot portion, and we'll need a motion to approve the general fund portion.
Second.
Second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none of all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And one, uh, negative, the general fund, we have a motion.
So you.
Second.
Second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none of all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, um...
Thank you all for being.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Presentations, we appreciate it much.
We thank each one of you.
Okay, under other council actions? I think you're in plenty of seconds.
We'll get you next time.
You better come around.
Yes, we will make you proud. Me and Turner, love you, thank you. And you'll be all happy to talk to us.
Aaron, thank you.
I was here when, in the eighties, when they quit.
Thank you.
We didn't even have anything, you know? And I know how it is. Thank you for. I was on, I was on the council in the eighties.
You have a right to live your life.
Like, we had it real, but, I mean, we were, we were out of it. So, you know, the things you were doing. We still, we tried to make all the people, all, there's all that there, there eighty years.
Well, dear, thank you, Mayor Turner, good to see you, thank you, thank you, sir.
Hey, well done.
I'm not gonna shake this guy's head.
You are, come on, man. Thanks, Mayor, appreciate all your support, it's been great. Do you, you are, you are a hard man. Turn, turn in the right direction, what is it I'm doing?
Thank y'all so much, we appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and get busy again.
I love your daughter, I got to meet her the other day. Thank you, Ms. Frack, on behalf of YPO. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the next agenda item. Okay, the next agenda item is consider bids for a certain park improvements proposed for Western Manor and Murray Fly, Mr. Pat.
Right, thank you. We bid our new improvements that were planned for Murray Fly Park as well as.
If y'all could, please hold it down just a little bit. All right, go ahead, Mr. Pat.
We opened bids for the improvements planned for Murray Fly Park as well as Western Manor Park. Two great park sites, neighborhood park sites. We had, the Odessa Parks Foundation has previously put new playgrounds at these two park sites. Both very popular parks, Murray Fly was next to an old stomping ground, I grew up next to that. And very glad to get new playground improvement there, because we had the same playground that I played on forty years ago, so that was interesting.
Just forty?
Yeah. Yeah, maybe thirty.
And you were two years old when you went there?
Very good, thank you, Barbara, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. So you just remember, do me the same way sometimes.
Absolutely, no doubt. We opened the bids and we had two very good bids on the improvements that's gonna be made at the two park sites. Both park sites will be, the amenities added will get us up to our normal level of what we do as far as amenities in our neighborhood parks. At Western Manor, this will include a perimeter sidewalk, new post and cable on the west side between the alley and the park side. Liding and three, what I call picnic table shelters. Simply a picnic table with a sheltered roof over the very top of it. Provides some shade along with a grill. Also a little bit of irrigation work and some topo changes, we're gonna do some berms on that perimeter and a new backstop. Too small of a park site for a basketball court, usually in our neighborhood parks, we would like to do a basketball court or a tennis court. Now Murray Fly Park has got sort of a half-court basketball court and a tennis court that exists now. That's gonna be obliterated, demolished, there's a lot of structural problems with that. We're gonna do away with that basketball court and tennis court that's there and replace it with a new one. And a half-court basketball court, perimeter walking trail, three picnic table shelters and liding also. The projects came in from Onyx Contractors, their bid was six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. J.C. Roberts Construction at eight hundred and forty-one, nine forty-five. After reviewing the bid information, we recommend that low bid on Onyx Construction at six hundred and eighty-nine, one fifty-five, along with consultant, be approved for the bid award.
Are there any questions?
Great little projects for us.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Some.
We have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pat.
We do have a lot of enthusiasm, I.
Absolutely.
Uh, next, we'll open a public hearing. We'll open a public hearing to consider the renewal of a taxicab franchise to Modesta Transportation, Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we're a little pressed for time, so I'll make this pretty quick. This is a renewal of one of our largest taxes companies, Modesta Taxi Service, and they're requesting renewal five years. They have eight taxis, they have met with all of our past terms and conditions, and we agreed to follow those same conditions, and we will work again for their renewal.
This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to address the council on this Modesta Transportation, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under ordinance, consider amending Article thirteen dash two of the City Code of Ordinances by amending section three thirteen point two entitled Stormwater, Ms. Shaw.
I'm gonna have to switch it from our deal to, there's a button there, Michael can get it.
I'll wait. Michael to the rescue.
Of course.
Everybody knows your password, yes?
Maybe not.
No pressure, don't you hate just having to do that? Yeah, everybody watching you. No pressure.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, thanks for having me tonight. I'm here to request your consideration for the amendment to our current stormwater rates. Just to give you a brief history, in nineteen seventy-three, the EPA amended the Clean Water Act to include stormwater functions. In nineteen ninety-eight, that was in turn given to the TCEQ, who turned around and handed over to the cities and counties in Texas. The city of Odessa adopted their stormwater ordinance in two thousand and ten. Since that time, we've been preparing for implementation and have actually begun implementation in the last couple of years. The stormwater permit, which the city of Odessa held, holds and is responsible for, covers six areas, which you'll see here. They are the monitoring of industrial activity, public education and outreach to increase awareness of the program, the detection and elimination of any illicit discharges in the city or into the city from the outside, construction activities and post-construction activities. And then finally, good housekeeping to ensure that the city itself is actually following its own regulations. At this point, we've fully implemented construction activities requirements, and we've kind of touched on the tip of each of the other five with the funding and staff we have right now. The change in stormwater rates that we're proposing tonight will allow us to implement the remainder of the five items to have a fully implemented stormwater program. There are two widely used methods for stormwater rate structures. One is a flat rate, which we currently have. The other is a tiered structure based on a property's impact on stormwater or its impervious cover, which is what the staff is proposing tonight. We've done a comparison of rates with Midland, San Angelo, Love of Wichita Falls, Amarillo and Adeline. All of these, with the exception of Wichita Falls, have a tiered rate. And the rate that we're proposing tonight come in, in about ninety-five percent of the categories, come in lower than all of those cities' rates, with the exception of Midland, who actually has not implemented a rate at this point. I'll start with what is impervious cover. It's defined as the surface in any landscape that cannot effectively absorb or infiltrate rainfall. That includes driveways, roads, parking lot, rooftops and sidewalk. So basically, it's anything that prevents rainwater from percolating into the ground. And then the map I have here is an illustration of where a typical section of Odessa would fall into the rates. You can see the residential rates, the residentials over on the right are into the different tiers, one through four, and then the commercial are more towards the left in the top. You have two options before you tonight. The first one here is one rate, which when it's adopted, would carry the plan to full implementation in five years without a rate change for that entire time. Oh, let me switch here. As you can see, the small residential rates of start, stay at one eighty-five for the very smallest, which is what we have currently. And then the largest non-residential rate goes up to a hundred dollars a month for a string of large commercial. And then everything is on the spectrum in between there. The second option for you to consider tonight is a year-by-year rate based on what can be accomplished in a year and what resources are needed for that year only. This plan will still allow for full implementation within five years. It will just evaluate the needs based on a year-by-year basis. I have the comparisons here, if you guys would like to see those with the other cities, otherwise I'll answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions?
What was the difference in what the amount of the residents in the city of Odessa would pay in a five-year plan versus a one-year plan in the five years?
Over the course of the five years, I only have the first year proposal here. I'm sorry.
The cumulative after the first year was four fifty, four hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Right. And I apologize for not bringing that. Over. The largest commercial rate starts at eighty-five going the year-by-year and ends up at about a hundred and twenty-five. So that would be the difference for the largest commercial.
On the year-by-year?
On the year-by-year.
And on a five-year rate, which one, that one, same one would fall under what?
Be a hundred.
It would stay pat at a hundred for the five years, as opposed to about a hundred and twenty-five.
Basically making up the money and, yeah, we get on first. Okay, what other questions? Okay, basically you have two options, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we've used the one-year.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the one-year, please say aye.
Aye.
That's three, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye. And two, so the one-year passes. Next, we move to, thank you very much, Ms. Turner. Next, we move to the adoption of the landscape order, Mr. Morton.
Mayor, Council, you just received that ordinance tonight, although you've been briefed on it previously, so if you want a tablet to have more time to look at that ordinance, you're more than welcome to.
I would think that with it being the number one thing on every one of our long-term agenda items, I'd like to vote for it tonight. I would move that we both.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adopting tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. McNeil? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's four to one, and it passes. Next, consider ordinance adopting the two thousand and sixteen City of Odessa Comprehensive Plan, Vanessa.
Mayor, Council, I would ask for your approval tonight for the comprehensive master plan that the city staff and the city council and the CPAC has been working on for the last approximately two years. I have a brief presentation, if you'd like me to go through it. Otherwise, we've seen it several times and it's been before you several times. We appreciate your approval.
I'd just soon move for approval.
Okay, second. Motion second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
Next, we move to appointment of boards, Mr. Maldon.
For the zoning board of adjustment, reappoint Mark Wenden.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider hotel convention center master development, Mr. Hall.
As the council's aware, we've been working for some months on the development of this agreement. We've reached the point where we would like to discuss with the council what the terms that we have not been able to agree with the other party on. And I would suggest that we have this in executive session.
Okay, do we have a motion to move on executive? Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in executive session. Thank y'all for staying, and we apologize. Once you get the attorneys talking, just. Hey, any motions to come out of executive session?
So move.
Second.
That was about five. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we come to citizen comments on non-agenda items. Since it's not an agenda item, we can't actually talk to you about it, but we can listen. So we'll keep it to three minutes, like we did with everything else. Alejandro, apologize, I can't reach a last.
All right, well, first off, thank you, thank you very much, you're welcome, the city council. Thank you, Mayor, for taking the time out and hearing us, it's a little late in the night, and you guys wanna get out of here. But right now, representing me, I'm co-owner of Curbside Beach Row, I have a beautiful wife here, and just recently some new ordinance that passed. Nothing too drastic, nothing we haven't had in the past. We've been in business with our food trucks since two thousand and fourteen, late two thousand and fourteen. And we've been having a City of Odessa permits all through this whole time. The one that personally affects us is the actual rule where twenty-four hours, every time you have to move, within twenty-four hours of your business. For us, we invested in actual space right off of Grant, one thousand and five North Grant, close to the heart of downtown, actually. We've been a big part of functions for the City of Odessa, for downtown Odessa. We do hot summer nights, we do different functions, we do different charity events there at our location. We open Monday, Tuesday through Sunday at our location, and this directly affects us because if we had to move our food truck every twenty-four hours, we don't have a place where we can dump our gray water, refill our portable water, our trash, our commissary. That location acts as our central hub, that's our commissary, that's where we get groceries delivered from actual food suppliers, from Benny Keith, Cisco and so on. So not only is it our building, but it's our central preparation area that we use. We do, we still are mobile, we do events, we do caterings, we do functions, we do charity events, anything that you can think of. So we are still fully mobile, but we park our truck during the week there, because usually on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, there's no events, there's no events going on or anything like that. If this rule stays in effect, that will directly affect us. Our lease we signed for five years, and initially, we'd be paying for six, for a full year for our lease, when we can only use it for six months out of the year. So you can see where it directly affects us. The only option we have for that is not appeal, but to ask you, the members of city council, to see if we can go back and either look at it again, or maybe get grandfathered in, or something we could do there that doesn't affect our personal business. Everything else on the actual ordinances is great. We've been working, I actually wanna thank everybody from the, that works for the city, from the city lawyers to the actual secretaries, to Michael, they've been more than grateful for us. They've been working with us, we've been in contact. If they say they call you before five o'clock, they'll give you a call before five o'clock. So the problem isn't communication, the problem is actually just the ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know I can't comment, but did you say where you, where your lease is, where are you?
I give one thousand and five North Grant. It's right here, right off of downtown.
I missed that part, so.
Okay, uh, next is Esteban.
Same.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm coming here as a customer, and also a brother, and like most brothers, me and him, we actually get along. I would like to say that, you know, as a customer, whenever I wanna go to Texas Roadhouse, I live on the south side, I go north some, Grant, on Grantview. As soon as I pass forty-second, I know it's on my left-hand side. And I can go there every day, and I know it's in the same place. Now, if I go any other day, and all of a sudden, Texas Roadhouse isn't there, and I'm hungry, I don't think I'm gonna be going there very often, especially if they're unpredictable and, you know, I don't know where they're gonna be at. And after being here all night and listening to all the other organizations, about half of them said that they wanted to use food trucks for their. about half of them said that they wanted to use food trucks for their locations. And, I mean, I think just putting stricter rules and regulations is kind of gonna take that away, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Brian Patrick.
Good evening. My name is Brian Patrick. I'm the general manager of Conaduro Mobile Woodfire Pizza. And recently, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to get some information. That's partially on us too, is, is some of the regulations are coming down. And if you go into any of the local food pages, the food trucks, you always see whether they're gonna start doing this, start doing this. And just one of the, is, is there a central place we can go to? Because what we're hearing now is they want us to install fire suppression in the trailers. And I did speak to a couple of people today and everyone seemed awfully surprised by that. But I do wanna, I do wanna be proactive on the business. It is our responsibility. It's not, we don't take the approach that it's the city's responsibility to come knocking on our door and saying, here it is. But we do, we would like to know what's, if this is accurate. And I know you can't respond to me, but how do we find out if this is true or not? Because we had, we had some several different responses on this.
You can contact my office. I'm the city manager and we'll get you the information. I think there is some misinformation out there on that and we can surely clear that up.
And it, just on entertainment value, there was a lot of, there was a lot of talk today on Facebook and there's a lot of people upset and so forth. But I give a lot of credit to people behind me. Of all the fifty to sixty to seventy food trucks, these were the only people that actually cared enough to come down here tonight to, to question and see what was happening. But we will call you and hopefully we'll wanna know you more than once or twice.
That's his job. Thank you. Uh, we also have Candy Caswell. She just did not wanna speak, but I did get a note from her. Is there any more? Mr. Maldon?
No.
Okay. Then we are adjourned.
Thank y'all for staying.